Well, hello there.
Good evening. How are you, my brother?
All is well. All is well. I appreciate you. I really appreciate you. Just so that you know, I've invited just a couple of other people. And I'm sure you're familiar with the Honorable Judge Kenneth King from thirty-sixth District Court. And also, one of our media partners, Walter Harrison. And just overall, we we all have at least one thing in common. That we all are members of the Prince Hall family. So, yes. So didn't know, you might not, you know, everybody might not have been aware of that, but that is, that is good brothers trying to do some good work.
That's right. That's right.
I'm gonna give him a couple of minutes, if that's okay. Or the other two.
You know, I'm packing on the computer anyway, so if you just wanna do some things in the background, that's fine.
Yes, yes. So I know you have to get off, you know, you've got other things to do. And what I'm going to do is, again, the, you know, the things that I wanted to talk about, you guys are pretty much very familiar with those things and already aware of. You know, the questions that I was gonna ask, but again, it's really to better educate and create a larger awareness for, you know, some folks that just might not know. So again, I really appreciate you. Once, like I said, they come out, I will formally introduce everybody and, you know, give you your, your, your just desserts.
How many young men are there that have participated?
Well, I've, I've invited, well, I've invited a few. But what I don't know is, you know, whether or not they're going to, you know, sign on. I'm prayerful that they will, you know, to inform them, but the reason I wanted to make sure that I was able to record everything was because building ultimately a website that, or a forum, so that, you know, hey, if you can't get there today, you can get back on there tomorrow, or, you know, at some point in time, to, to, to get the information, you know. Working with a couple of schools, a couple of principals. Cass Tech is one. Martin Luther King High is another. And these things are being, or these opportunities have been enabled, you know, due to the different mentoring programs that I'm, you know, being a part of and whatnot as well. So, again, the bigger picture, again, is to reduce the substance use disorders and, you know, the maladaptive behaviors and things like that. So, just trying to put it out there, good, good sir.
Okay.
So, you know, is, and again, being mindful of the time, as others join in, I'll, I'll admit them as we go, but I wanna, you know, like I said, wanna keep in mind your time. So again, I wanna say thank you for your time. And I know your schedule is busy. So yeah, I'm not gonna make this, this, this LSS kitchen conversation too long. So again, I'd like to welcome you, City of Detroit Councilman, James Tate, District One, I believe.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
No, thank you.
Hello, no. District One. Absolutely.
Yeah, there you go. There you go. We appreciate you all. So, I'm just gonna say that I'm a a proponent of, of the old adage, you know, if they knew better, they'd do better. You know what I'm saying? So therefore, to decrease that, you know, substance use disorders in, in young people, again, between the ages of sixteen and twenty-four, we've kinda created this forum overall. And what will happen is I'm engaging different perspectives. A civic perspective, say for today. An entertainment perspective, I've got some folks that are gonna come on and speak about, you know, how, how these things look in the entertainment industry. And, you know, just trying to touch all these different genres and areas so that the young people will, will understand, you know, that certain things just aren't, aren't necessary. So today, we're gonna discuss marijuana. So let's get right to it. Recently, I know on behalf of the citizens of Detroit and other entities that there are new laws and new things that have come up as it relates to marijuana. Having said that, my first question to you would be, can you tell the individuals, the young people, the people, the difference between medical and recreational marijuana?
Absolutely.
Yeah, or, or, you know, or suggest where they can go to understand those differences?
Sure. Again, thank you for allowing this forum to educate folks. I think it is extremely important. Like you say, when folks know better, they do better, but sometimes they just don't know where to go to get the information. So me being a, a source of information and being able to use that is a blessing for me, and I appreciate, again, the opportunity to do so today. So, wanna go back in two thousand and eight. The voters in the state of Michigan voted to approve, in a ballot initiative, medical marijuana. Medical marijuana is designed, at least the, the premise is designed to allow individuals who have certain health ailments to use cannabis as a medicine, a therapeutic, to heal, or at least to subdue some of the symptoms that you may have from various, again, various illnesses. I've seen cancer on the list. There are some issues when it comes to the brain and neurological challenges that are also allowable. What makes medical marijuana different than recreational or black market or gray market, whatever you wanna call it, is that it is legal but to purchase, but you have to have a card. And that card gives you the ability to go into what's called a provisioning center. A lot of people just look at them and say it's a dispensary. Well, it's funny, again, the terminology, and I've learned a lot more about this industry being the sponsor of the current ordinance than I knew before. But the provisioning center is for medical marijuana. Dispensary is for a recreational adult-use facility. And so, in two thousand and eight, again, the voters went to the polls in state of Michigan and voted to allow Michigan to participate for the first time in medical marijuana. Up until, I wanna say in two thousand and eighteen, when there was a second vote for recreational marijuana, at the time, it was called, I wanna make sure I get the wording correctly, 'cause I always mix up the actual name of it. But the ballot initiative was called the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. At the time, it was known as Proposal One. And so the voters went to the polls, and fifty-seven percent of the voters in Michigan voted to approve Proposal One for recreational marijuana. What's significant is that sixty-nine percent of the voters in the city of Detroit, again, sixty-nine is higher than fifty-seven, so sixty-nine percent of the voters in Detroit voted to allow recreational marijuana to be within our, our boundaries. Now, what's taking another layer back from that, though the city allowed for, or the state, excuse me, allowed for, based on the voter initiative, each municipality still had to opt to, to, to create an ordinance to either prohibit it and not allow it in, or to, again, continue the opt-in option, which would create licensing for recreational marijuana in those municipalities. So to make it really, really plain, I know I'll give you a whole lot more information than you asked for the car, but to make it really plain, medical marijuana, you have to have a card to go into a facility to purchase the product, to purchase the cannabis, whereas recreational marijuana, which is not yet legal in the city of Detroit, recreational or adult-use cannabis, that does not require a card, and it is simply a situation like you would go to any other store and you purchase an item that you would like to, to take home.
So, and hopefully you can, you can still hear me, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I hear you. Can't see you, but that's okay.
Right. I'm not sure what happened. My, my, my camera, I guess the camera saw my face and just froze. It's something I I don't know. But thank God for, you know, dual resources with this technology. So, having said that, you, you talked about different types of licenses that'll be issued in the city of Detroit, and individual licenses and all those types of things. Are there different types of licenses for individuals between the ages of eighteen and twenty-four? And if so, why?
So the, the licensing process is for those eighteen and older to participate. And you have, there's, there's no specific carve-out for the younger members of that spectrum. It's for everyone. So there's ten licenses that will be available. Of course, you gotta go through the various qualifications, but first I'll tell you what those ten categories are. Okay. You have a category of adult-use retail establishment. And that's simply what I mentioned earlier, a retail establishment is a dispensary, where you go and you purchase your cannabis. The second category is a grower. A grower is simply an entity that grows cannabis. Processor is another license. Processor is someone who transforms the plant, the cannabis plant, into some other type of usable cannabis, whether it be an oil or a an edible, that's placed in, in some type of treat that you, you would eat. A secure transporter is another license. A secure transporter transports large amounts of cannabis from one facility to the next. And some will say, you need a license for that? Absolutely. The, the state of Michigan, and let me just go back to the city of Detroit. The city of Detroit decriminalized marijuana possession for personal use, and that's up to two and a half ounces in two thousand and twelve. Now, though, personal use was decriminalized up to two thousand, excuse me, two and a half ounces, clearly, when you're moving product from one location to the next, it's more than two point five. So you have to have a actual license to move that amount of cannabis, otherwise you will be in violation of the law. And unfortunately, even though it has been decriminalized in the city, you'll be subject to criminal charges. So just wanna make sure everyone knows that.
Okay.
The fifth license is a safety compliance facility. Safety compliance facility is a lab that essentially tests the cannabis to ensure that it's free of any harmful heavy metals, or pesticides, or mold, or anything that can be dangerous for consumption. That is another license. Another license that, that's available is what's called a designated consumption lounge. Now, this is a new one that the state allowed, not terribly long ago, just putting the rules, I wanna say in July of this year. What they did was they allowed for individuals to, or to, to obtain a license to have a facility where, similar to a bar, you could consume your cannabis. Now, that doesn't always have to be a smokable form of cannabis. It could be a place that's offering coffee and sells you edible cannabis products. So it's still, the state of, of Michigan has yet to award any of those licenses. But that is a license type that is at least on paper available. They're still working through all of the, the details the state is. And then you have what's called a microbusiness. That's another license category. A microbusiness is more of a mom-and-pop shop where you have to do everything I taught, a lot of what I talked about earlier, only in one location. So that microbusinesses, microbusiness has to grow, process, and do their retail at the same location. And what's unique about a microbusiness is that it is certainly the, the least expensive of licenses, but you also have a, a smaller plant count that's allowable. So the risk is tremendous with a, a, a microbusiness. But again, the license fee is less, and you have the ability to have more control over what comes in and, and out of your facility. The second-to-last license that's available is the marijuana event organizer, and it's really simple. You know, this is a contractor that sets up marijuana-related events. There have been magazine publications that have, like High Times and others, that have had events out in the open. And a marijuana event organizer would be the contractor that would set up that particular workout, the details with the venue, and the, the person who was actually putting on the, the event. And then lastly, is a temporary marijuana event. And a temporary marijuana event, again, is, is kinda self-explanatory. It's a temporary event that, where marijuana is allowed to be sold on the premises. That is a one-day deal for a, a number of hours. It's not a revolving, ongoing event that you will be able to obtain for multiple days. And if you do have an opportunity to obtain it for multiple days, you would have to have one for each particular day, if you have it within a, a, a stretch period of time. So those are the licenses that are available. For those who are seeking to enter into the industry, I just wanna let you know that it is a very capital-expensive venue. It takes a lot of money. Even, you know, the city of Detroit, we're working to create reductions or discounts on fees. But it really, if you wanna do this the right way, you're gonna have to more than likely either get a loan or find some grants. And we're working on, as the city of Detroit, that aspect, but as of right now, we've got great conversations but no commitments yet. And so, I, I just wanna let everyone know who is trying to get into the industry, that it's, it's not just as simple as going out and getting a license and just opening up. You've gotta go through the state qualifications. You've gotta go through the state inspection process. You have to go through the city of Detroit's inspection process. You have to make sure you have a building that is able to pass inspection. You have to make sure that you find a building, which is also a, a challenge for some folks, because there's some zoning laws that may prohibit you from placing your establishment in that location. So there's a number of things that you have to, to know. This is a real business. And I would always tell anyone who's looking to get into this industry that is highly regulated, that you absolutely work with a professional to get you to that point. Because any, any, any small move, especially on the state side, a very, any, any incorrect move, let me put it that way, very well may null and void your, your application with the state, and it may cause you to start all over again and potentially lose money that you desperately will need in, in this industry as you move forward.
Okay. So then, again, and being mindful of, of your time, I'm probably just gonna ask you three more questions, okay?
Oh, I'm, I'm here, I'm here with you. Tell me what you need. I'm
I appreciate it.
I'm here to educate.
So then, well, if I may ask then, and I'm, I'm, again, I'm ignorant to this, you were talking about the business side of it. What, what, can you speak about, I've heard, a legacy program?
Yeah, we call the Detroit Legacy. This is where we want to make sure that this was an industry that is not like others in the city of Detroit, where Detroiters live here, they patronize, we don't have, we don't have true opportunities of ownership. So, I worked with a phenomenal group of individuals. We had a work group. Initially, we had about forty or so people. And then it, they were created, committees were created, where they branched out and tried to identify different things that we could add and include into this this ordinance, based on what we've seen from around the country and around the state. And so one of the committees, we're dealing with, how do we, how do we determine who from the city receives any benefits that we may be able to offer? And what are those benefits? And one of those benefits is being a legacy Detroit. We came up with this concept. Because we know that the war on drugs ravaged many urban five ways to flip that situation, where those who were potentially incarcerated, or at least in communities that were disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs, that they had an opportunity for ownership. And so, the Legacy Detroit program is a part of our social equity, or the, the social equity initiative within the ordinance that does a couple of things. One, Legacy Detroiters have a opportunity for a reduction on fees. As I mentioned before, it's very, very, very expensive to be in this particular industry. And so the city of Detroit and the proposed ordinance that I have on the table, Legacy Detroiters will have to pay no more than one percent of whatever licensing application fee that we have on the table. So for some, that may be the licensing fee maybe five thousand dollars, maybe one thousand dollars. Five thousand dollars, you're paying fifty bucks. You know, that's not a bad deal at all. So that was very intentional. The other benefit is that Detroit, Legacy Detroit will have priority in their processing of applications. So we're gonna process Legacy Detroiters first before we process other individuals. The other benefit of being a Legacy Detroit is that we, as I mentioned before, are working to get funding, to obtain funding to assist Legacy Detroiters in this effort. And then lastly, and this was one that I think is extremely different, important, but, but very, very important, is that the city will be offering certain properties that are allowable in for, that are allowable in marijuana-zoned portions of the city, allowing Detroiters, Legacy Detroit to purchase the property for twenty-five percent of the actual value. Okay, that's huge. And the reason why that's huge is because many times, especially again in urban communities, when individuals, building owners realize that their property is, lies in, in, in area where it can be zoned for cannabis licenses, you'll have individuals who will jack up that price, you know, five, six, seven, even more times, and make it unattainable for what we're calling Legacy Detroit. And I know I can see your wheels, I can even hear wheels turning, the folks who are watching right now saying, well, how do you become a legacy? Then there's other three ways. I mean, in addition to that, one is living in the city of Detroit for at least fifteen of the last thirty years. The second way is to live in the city of Detroit for thirteen of the last thirty years, and be low-income. And that'd be, you know, I, I think that number's like twenty-four thousand dollars a year for a family of four. And then lastly, the other way to qualify or to be certified as a Legacy Detroit is to live in the city of Detroit for ten of the last thirty years and have a marijuana-related conviction. Now, the one marijuana-related conviction that you cannot have on your record and obtain a license is having a conviction of providing controlled substances, that's the word, controlled substances, to minors. That is the only crime that you can commit that would nullify your ability to obtain a license in the city of Detroit, or actually in the state of Michigan, to that effect.
Okay, so then when, a couple of things, you just triggered so many things for me. What are, well, you already talked about consequences, minors, you know, not adhering to the laws and whatnot. One thing that, that I've been asked before is can an individual, if they're able to drive, are they also allowed to smoke marijuana?
Absolutely not. You are, I mean, if you are under the influence, it's a violation of the law. So when you go out and you consume cannabis, or you consume it while you're driving, that is a violation of the law all day. The challenge that law enforcement has is that, actually determining if you're intoxicated, if you are under the influence. As we know, cannabis stays in your system far longer than other so-called controlled substances. And when you look at heroin, or even some of the more harsh drugs, that are Schedule I drugs, controlled substances, they may get out of your system within, you know, ninety, ninety minutes, some within an hour. But cannabis can stay in your system for months, and depending on your metabolism, it could really stick around for quite some time. So you may have consumed cannabis a week ago, and if someone were to test you, it could show that you still have it in your system. So the law enforcement and other entities are trying to identify testing that could determine your immediate, your current intoxication. But as of right now, there is no foolproof test that is out there that can determine if you're currently integrated, if you are intoxicated by cannabis. But it is still a violation of the law, and I would say not to test that, that theory, that they may not be able to know, because there's other avenues in which the law enforcement can identify your levels of intoxication. So I would say, one, you don't wanna do it because you don't wanna violate the law, but two, you don't wanna do it because you don't wanna harm or injure yourself, or potentially injure someone else. So I think it's always very, very important to keep in mind. And there was, I remember back in the day, there was a billboard that was really geared towards drinking and driving. And they said that buzzed driving is still drunk driving. If you're buzzed and you're, and you're smoking cannabis, or you're, you have consumed cannabis, you're buzzed and you're driving, you're still high. So there is no, I'm kinda high, I'm a little hot. Either you are, or you're not. So I would advise anyone who has that question on their mind, am I buzzing, should I, if you have consumed cannabis, certainly within a short period of time of you seeking to get behind the wheel, I would advise you not to do that, because it could be very, very prohibitive for you, could, again, hamper your ability to it could injure you or, or someone else. And if arrested or found to be driving intoxicated, it could put additional financial and other burdens on yourself if you end up having your license revoked, and having points on your, on your license, and just not working, just not working.
So, having said that, and, and, and it, it kinda takes me into my last question, and with all those things you just talked about, number one, individuals should always stay on the right side of the law. Not only for the legal ramifications, but for, for health and everything else. That's why, you know, and I appreciate your explanation in describing the differences between, you know, the illegal marijuana and, and, and the medical marijuana. But my question now is, or the last that I wanna close with, is if there is a situation that arises regarding marijuana and questionable behavior with, you know, law enforcement, how should, or what would you recommend a citizen to do? How to handle that?
Well, it all depends on what the, the, the interaction is, and what, what initiated the interaction. You, you still have all rights as an individual, even if you are in the wrong. You have a right to ensure that you are treated respectfully, that you know exactly what your rights are at that moment. But you also have to be, again, aware that what you say and what you do, if you're in the presence of law enforcement, can, and, and it can, and, and it very well may be used against you in a court of law. So, uh, that's why I always advise to make sure you know what you're doing in advance of, uh, consuming cannabis, uh, certainly out in the public. You should not be doing that. Uh, it is a violation of the law to consume cannabis, uh, in public spaces. Uh, when you're at home, you're an adult, you can do what you wanna do. It is your life. Um, you can choose to take that path or not, by someone or not. But when you're out in the public, now you're sharing the space with others and you have to be considerate of not just their, uh, of, of the laws, but maybe there's some health issues that someone may have that will be affected by your consumption, if, especially if it's a smokable form of cannabis. Just gotta make sure that you do your best. And this is not just with cannabis-related, um, uh, issues, but just in general. Understand that we're a part of each other. We all are interconnected. And so no matter what we do, we have to be cognizant, just like what happens to someone else affects us, what we do affects someone else as well. So I would, uh, again, just suggest to everyone who are, everyone who's seeking to get into the industry, everyone who's seeking to, um, uh, purchase and consume cannabis from the industry, uh, do your homework, because there's so many different ways that, as we've seen, um, history kinda repeats itself. We've seen how governmental entities and others have, uh, used the force of law against members of the community. And so you don't wanna put, put yourself in a situation where, uh, though it may still be legal and, uh, decriminalized, you do something that is a foul of what is allowable. And now that same thing, once again, that somebody else is making a whole lot of money of, or, or, uh, Trump, will also be a thing that ends up putting you unfortunately, uh, in a more detrimental situation. Um, it's not easy to get these items removed from your, your record based on what they are. So just know the rules, know the law, follow the law. And if you have a question, consult with someone who may have, uh, answers. I'll put my number out there for any of the, the, the folks who are watching right now who wanna call. And the phone number is three one three two two four one zero two seven. Again, my office number is three one three two two four one zero two seven. Or if you want to send an email, because we are still working remotely, uh, we do check the voicemail. But if you wanna send an email, you can do so by sending it to councilmember Tate, C O U. Uh, see, it's so funny when you spell it. I can, I can write it out easy. C O U N C I L M. The lab, M E B E R T A T E at D E T R O I T M I dot gov. Exactly. I can write it down all day long, but try to actually spell it out, out front. You know, messes me up. So councilmember Tate at Detroit M I dot gov.
Well, thank you. Uh, again, I, I really appreciate your time and the, uh, educational information. Uh, and hopefully, uh, individuals are, are, are more well-informed after seeing and, and, and hearing what you've had to say. So a- again, thank you and, uh, I'm gonna let you get back to all the things that I know you have to do and, and, and just know that you're greatly appreciated.
Thank you, my brother, and I appreciate you. And if there's ever anything else that I can do to assist, uh, for you and your viewers, uh, you just let me know and we're here for it.
All right. Thanks again.
For providing the service again.
All right.
All right.
Signing off. Talk to you later.